This is Ray Giovanni, the chairman of economic development for the town of Monroe. And I welcome you this evening. Today's date is March 11th, 2021. We're starting at 7:00 PM. This is for economic development. I hereby call the meeting, you know, to order. And please allow me to confirm those members and staff that are participating with us this evening. When I call your name, if you could just be affirmative that you're here, it'd be great. I see Mary Hall is here.
Yes.
Thank you. James Goldstein is here, Jim. Christine. Christine Whitton-Hour is here.
Thank you.
Our staff member, Bill Holsworth, is here.
Hello.
And I can't see everybody. Do you think, have I missed someone?
Well, Herman is, Herman just texted me. He's running late. He is gonna join.
Okay, great. And we have a guest speaker. Yo, thank you, Danielle. We have a guest speaker, Danielle Ronan, with us this evening, who's joined us as well. So, thank you for joining us. I hereby declare that we have a quorum and call the meeting to order, as I said. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Orders Number 7B, dated March 14th, 2020. Boy, that was almost a year ago. Using GoToMeeting electronically for technology conferencing. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in the meeting via computer, tablets, smartphone, and telephone, using access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has its unique participation information, so please be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on the first access basis and is not controlled by the town of Monroe. While it's anticipated that we will not exceed this participation limit for this meeting, should it appear that we are approaching that limit and any member of the public cannot be denied access, I, as chair, will reserve the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using the technology appropriate to ensure that all members of the public may participate. So again, remembering that this meeting is being conducted in real time and that this meeting is open to the public and that any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. That this meeting is being recorded and we will ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized to speak. That anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen will become part of our recording. The recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days and that the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time also in town hall or upon written request. It's, you know, we're gonna follow the standard parliamentary procedures. Okay, as said forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature, you know, public participation if need be. Okay. So, we now turn to the first agenda item. And from there, as I said, we'll introduce the matter on the agenda. If a vote is anticipated, I will ask for a motion in a second. And after the introduction of that matter, upon the motion, I will invite each member by name for discussion. After all members have had an opportunity to speak at this time, we'll repeat the invite to each member in the same order until there's no further comment. So, please, thank you for recognizing that. Everyone will have an equal opportunity to speak. Upon the conclusion of the discussion, I will call a vote for anything that's required. And we'll do a roll call for that purpose. Okay? Great. I think that pretty much does it. So, thank you very much for joining us. Hi, Lauren, how are you? So what I'd like to do.
Ray, Ray, before we start. Before we start the meeting, we were to do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Except we don't have a flag.
Yeah, I was gonna include that on the agenda, but I don't know if anybody has a flag handy. I can go out and get one.
Yeah, usually we do that when we're in the room with a flag at it.
Okay, but we should be doing that as part of the, I don't have a flag right here.
Okay. Okay.
I totally agree with the whole concept of the pledge of allegiance for every meeting.
Yes. But we don't have a flag, though. Where can I find it?
I can get one. Oh, wait, Lauren's got it.
Oh, look at you, Lauren. Lauren saved the day.
All right, you're good.
Okay, let's do that then. I'm sorry. Thank you, Lauren. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Great. So, thank you for that. Lauren, you saved the day as usual.
All right, I'll try.
Thank you. You're the best. So, I'm very proud to say that we have our own Danielle Ronan, who's going to help share some of the thoughts about the wonderful campaign that she created for called March Madness that is starting to really ramp up in town and get some excitement around it. So, why don't I turn the floor over to you, Danielle? And maybe we should introduce you to everyone. I'm sorry, or do you know everybody? I'm not sure.
I don't know everybody, but I can introduce myself. I know most people. So, I'm Danielle Ronan. I am a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty. Our office is in Trumbull. I'm a Monroe resident. And my husband and I, we work together. We've been selling real estate in Connecticut going on now. And I love this town. I'm very proud of this town. And I, basically, everything I do is to support the initiatives in Monroe, so.
Yes, that you do. And you do it well. So, thank you. So, why don't we jump right into your strategies that you have that are playing out so nicely for us?
Okay. So, this was something that I was aiming to do on my own until Ray contacted me. And I was happy to get the support of both the EDC and the Chamber. I'm always trying to do things for businesses and small businesses, especially in my hometown. So, I had come up with this idea to help revitalize the local economy. And now that restrictions are being loosened, it's getting easier. So, coming up with how we can increase the profile of both of our service businesses and our retail businesses while at the same time engaging community support in a fun and engaging and rewarding way because people like to do things if they're gonna get something for it. So, March Madness came to be where I figured, let's coincide this with the actual, well, I called it March Madness because March Madness, the football, the baseball, no, basketball, wrong sport. I'm not a sports, well, I am a sports person, just not a basketball person. I wanted it to coincide so that there would be the parallel of March Madness, March Madness, and people might, their ears might perk up. Doing it for two weeks because anything more than that, I don't think I can handle, to be quite honest. To align with the timing where service businesses would participate and then we would be supporting retail businesses, just trying to get awareness for almost every business that's in the town. So, the way I structured it was we would have 14 categories, one for each of the two weeks of March. March Madness starts on the 18th and it ends on the 31st, and that's exactly 14 days in two weeks. Where each one of those days, Monroe can vote on their favorite. One day it'll be pizza, one day it'll be coffee, one day it'll be dry cleaner. I think I have dry cleaner in there, yeah. One day it'll be hair salon. And then they would have an opportunity to win a $25 gift card to the business in which they voted as their favorite. So, way it would work is, to give an example, the first day is pizza day. That's March 18th. And USA Tutors is sponsoring that day. And USA Tutors sponsorship was $25. So, I am doing all the orchestration on my end, all the execution. I have the survey and basically, the survey goes out, people vote, and then voting ends at 6:00. And then that evening will announce the winning business and then the winner, winning voter, who voted that day. And that person will win the $25 gift card, which came from the sponsor, who sponsored the day, to the business that they specifically voted for. So, you're not just, you're not getting the gift card to the people who voted the best pizza. You're getting it to the place that you feel is the best pizza. And that way, we can kind of get, you know, there's more than one winner, more than one person, more than one company, business. Featured.
Right.
So, yeah, so in addition to that, I picked up lawn signs and posters today that are gonna go throughout town. I'm gonna distribute the posters. I could use some help getting the posters into the retailer, into the retail businesses. And then I have 10 signs that the bills help. I'm going to put around town to get awareness. And basically, the survey's gonna reside on my Facebook page, which is the Monroe Real Estate Connection, Monroe CT Real Estate Connection. But it's a shareable link, so it'll, it could be shared to every Facebook page. Anybody who wants to take it and share it to their Facebook pages, their groups, could be shared in email, could be shared on all social media platforms. You know, the more people that share it, the more awareness it gets, the more people participate, excuse the cat. And so, there we go. And that's kind of how we're doing it. We're also, so relying on our sponsors to do the organic social media and email distribution. We're doing paid Facebook ads. The lawn signs did a video promotion. We have a press release. We had two articles printed in the Monroe Sun already. And we're also getting banner ads to run throughout the two weeks of the promotion, again, to get the word out there and get people engaged. Then, I also thought, at the end, we can measure the results based upon how many unique voters, I mean, how many voters each day, but then how many different unique voters voted? And then maybe do a follow-up survey with the businesses to see, get their feedback and see if they've noticed any upticks in their business as well and see if it's had any direct impact. So, that's it in a nutshell. I'm open for questions. I know I just said a lot of stuff.
All good stuff.
So, Danielle. Yes, Danielle, it's Mary Hall. I have, I have two questions. One, so the people are gonna vote on your website?
Not, no, so that's an independent link. All the surveys are individual links from an independent site. It's just, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna house it on my page. Well, I'm gonna orchestrate, basically, everything's gonna start on that Monroe CT Real Estate page. But it could be, and I'm gonna, I personally, I'm gonna copy it and put it on Monroe Parents, Monroe Residents, Monroe Chatter, every Monroe page that will allow me to post it to their page. I Shop Monroe, all of them. I'm encouraging anybody and everybody who knows about the contest, especially members of the Chamber, the EDC, and all the sponsors, to take that link and put it on their personal social media pages. And the businesses especially, to take that link and send it to their customers. I mean, their databases and get that link out to their, to their own customers to vote and help get the word out. It's just, I mean, it's gonna be centralized in one place, but it's gonna be, then it'll be shareable and viewable everywhere.
So, how are the votes, so then how are the votes, I'm, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm not computer savvy, so.
Not a problem.
So, how are the votes gonna get tabulated?
Excellent question. So, I'm using a website called Free Online, I think it's FreeOnlineSurveys.com. And as I said, I've already created 14 different ones. And each one has a tracking element. So, at the end of the day, I could close voting at 6:00 and I could hit results. And it will tell me, it'll, which, like, which pizzeria got the most votes, who came in second, third, fourth, fifth, so on and so forth. But the other part of it is the page where you vote. It says, if you want to be entered into the $25, to win a $25 gift card to your favorite business, enter your contact information. So, then I grab that, it comes in an Excel file, and then I could put all those names in a random spinny online thing and get a random winner. And then it's like, oh, Ray Giovanni, you, you, you're our random winner today. You won our $25 gift card. Well, I'm just using, Bob Smith, you are our winner today. You won our $25 gift card. And even though Jenny's Pizzeria got 78% of the votes, you voted for Country Pizza, so you're gonna get a $25 gift card to Country Pizza.
So, this is a free survey tool?
Yes.
Okay, is it, is it something similar to like Monkey Survey?
Do you know, but I tried Survey Monkey. I didn't find it very user-friendly. I went, I tried a bunch of different ones and I found that this particular one was the most user-friendly, so I just went with it.
Okay.
Great. Hey, it works. That's all that matters.
And my second question is, you said you picked up lawn signs and, and posters and everything. What's the out-of-pocket cost for this? Because I know we, you know, we voted last meeting to contribute the EDC to $175 for. What's your total, what's the total out-of-pocket cost for this?
So, between the Chamber and the EDC, I had a budget of $375. I have everything itemized. So, the, both of you will get an itemized summation of spending. The, I picked up the posters and the signs today. They came out to $180. Bill Bittar is charging me $150 to run those banner ads for the two weeks. It's usually $500 for the month, but he's giving us a break at $150 for two weeks, which leaves me with $30 that I'm using to do the boosted Facebook ads. And which I, I have a system through Keller Williams where I could brand it to March Madness. It's not branded to me. It's branded to the event where I can get 10 days for 30-day spend. I can get it over 10 days for like $3 a day or something like that. So, and I could target Monroe. And I could target interests and so that we make sure, so that Facebook's algorithms know to put the ad on the page of the people who would normally be the ones attracted to that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, great job, Danielle. We really are appreciative of that, of what this is gonna look like. And it's wonderful to have a little fun in times when it hasn't been so much fun.
Yes. Hello? I heard my name.
Hey Danielle, James Goldstein. How are you?
Hi.
I have a question. I love your campaign. It's great. Hi, hold on.
Okay.
Am I, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm just reconnecting. I do apologize. I'm at lacrosse practice tonight.
And now he's gone. So, Jim, we'll get back to you.
Oh, he's coming back.
How do you see that? I can't see him at all.
He's coming back.
I hear you.
Climb a tree, Jim.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Yes, I know. I do apologize. I'm in my car because I had a couple showings on houses today. As you know, Danielle, the market is just crazy and I had to jump at it. And Thursday is lacrosse night, so it happened to be one of the last practices indoors before we head to Wolf Park in a few weeks. So, I do apologize for being, being in my car for the connection. Danielle, you did a great job and I love the promotion you did. I've been seeing it everywhere possible. Is there any information that you could either send me or our team to kind of do a little preempt to put the word out instead of just the day of? Is there anything that we could kind of share in the meantime? Without kind of, you know, I know it's on one of your pages. I just don't know where it is.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I can send, you just tell me, I sense one central place to distribute to the group because the more people who spread the word, the better it is. So, I do have a full comprehensive link that not only, I have a video where I talk about the whole program that is also then has the poster, a copy of the poster. So, every day, every topic, every category, and the sponsor of each said category. The thing about the links, though, I can't get the links out any earlier than the day of because.
No, not the links for that, just some links or some information to do a bit of what was gonna be coming up. I like to send some my sphere of contacts and everybody else to kind of, you know, get the word out a little bit preempt.
Yeah, so Ray, would you be the central person where I would just send you one link and you can send it to everybody on the EDC and the Chamber for that matter?
Sure.
And yeah, and it would all do, because I was planning to do this for the sponsors. So, I'll write it up in the same vein where I'm just gonna give like instructions on the best way to promote. So, do this.
Great.
Do this, do like, you know, I'll, you guys are bright, but I'm just saying, I'm gonna write it in such a way where it's gonna be like posting this for dummies type thing, but you're not dummies. I don't mean to call you dummies. But I'll give careful instruction so that it's easy to just pick up and implement.
Great.
Because I was gonna do that for the sponsors anyway, so I'll just, well, your sponsor, so there you go. You would have it anyway.
No, great, great. And I know that you're, so any other, any other questions on this particular campaign?
That'd be great.
I was, I know that you're thinking of something else for the next go-around that my group wanted to hear about. But I know that it's probably, you're so busy with this one. I'm sure you don't have much formulated for the next one. But if we could help you in any way, we'd be glad to do so.
Well, I'll give you my conceptual thoughts, is that I wanted to do some sort of treasure hunt in Monroe that would encourage people to go to, inside the retailers. They'd have to go and visit and either have a clue and go find something. Or I was also thinking that each retailer, if you go in and visit, you fill out a little ticket. You put it in the, in the cup and then I would collect them all and somehow we would do some sort of giveaway or whatever. But just to get foot traffic into the retailers. But that, conceptually, that's what it is. I haven't really fleshed it out much more than.
Well, it sounds like a good enterprise to try, that's for sure. I mean, people are, you know, they're opening things up after March 19th, I know, a little bit. So, hopefully, that will help the floor, you know, foot traffic, you know, become more prevalent in all of our stores and shops, you know? That'd be great.
And if I, if I could just explain why I'm doing any of this, because that might be a question like, why? Why are you even bothering? Like, what's in it for you? There's the obvious that, yeah, I'm the face of the campaign, right, and I'm a Realtor and whatnot. But the truth of the matter is, is that I'm a small business owner in this town. And I'm as affected as anybody else is. And I, in my business goals dating back to 2018, it's written in my business goals that I wanted to forge partnerships, relationships with other business-minded people, with other businesses. And it was at that time, maybe even early, it may have been 2017, when I joined the Power Network, when I got involved with the Chamber. And, and I joined other networking groups as well. But for me, personally, those B2B relationships are really super important. And supporting small business is, is a passion of mine and making sure that we all grow together. And so, if anybody was wondering, why are you even doing this at all and spending all this energy? Well, that's the why.
No, I get it. No, and I never even thought about that because you've always been so pro-business that I never thought there was any personal gain to be made the way you seem to operate. So, I never even thought about that. Thanks for the clarity.
Any other questions?
I think that's great. This is Christine Whitner. Hi Danielle, how are you?
Hi.
I was just curious if you needed any assistance with this campaign as far as helping with like brochures or not brochures, but like social media flyers, that sort of thing. I can certainly help in that arena if you need some help. And especially the next one as well. We did a campaign similar to that last year, which was our Appreciate Monroe Businesses and kind of like a treasure hunt, similar idea, putting a name in a cup or, in our case, it was around.
St. Patty's Day.
St. Patty's Day. So, it was like a, you know, a theme around St. Patty's Day. And so, we have a lot of that information already available. And if we could help in any way, we can partner together and help you with that.
Yeah, what I'd like to do actually is, once this has ended, I might put together like a one-pager of thoughts, Christine, and I can share that with you. And then maybe we can, we could get together or talk about what you've done and how we might be able to incorporate it and build it to the next level.
Right. Being, it's almost already built. We were ready to go with it and then COVID hit. And then that next day, we had to pull the plug on the whole idea.
Exactly. Yeah, so I, you know, the thing that I do best is I, I'm an executor, not in the word, not in the killing way. But I'm a doer, right? I just do. Like, I'm the type of person who gets an idea, picks it up, runs with it, and just goes on autopilot and just does, 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 does. So, yeah, I would love to collaborate and, and figure that out. That would be wonderful.
Yes.
Did have one other question, but it's clearly not that important because it just went in and out, so.
Well, thank you very much, Danielle.
Do you need any help?
Thank you, Jim. That was, that was the question. I need help in distributing the posters to the retailers. That's where, because it has to get, it should get done this weekend, that they're in stores beginning Monday because the contest begins next Thursday. I have 50 of them. I'm just not gonna be able to hit every retailer. So, if anybody wants to volunteer and take a handful, and I'm gonna make a list and then assign. So, is there a chat box on this thing? Is there? Yeah, there is a chat box. Look at that. Cool. All right, I'm gonna put my email address in here. And if anybody can help me distribute five, 10 posters to retailers, that would be super helpful and what I'll do is.
Yes, Christine, and you could put us down. We'll be able to help.
And I'll just, I'll make a list and then split the list so that, that would, that would be really the most helpful thing for me.
Yeah, I'll put out some of those lawn signs for you too, as I mentioned, Danielle. I don't know if you got my email back.
Yeah, I did get your message and you are on the hook.
Okay, good. I'm ready. Good. Well, thank you again for such great ideas and enthusiasm, which our town certainly could use at these troubled times that are getting better, which is good. So, this is giving us all rolling forward and I'm excited about it. Anything else for the group to question Danielle, so she can go back to her family?
Oh, Danielle, it'd be good for you. I would offer to help, but I know we're gonna move on to something else that I think I'm gonna get involved in, so I can only.
Not a problem. And believe me, Lauren, you're first on my waiting list.
Okay.
You know, because Lauren wanted to sponsor too and it just, I had.
I know.
And the second you guys got involved, they went like that.
Good. That's good. Well, we'll do some more of this, so don't worry. There'll be plenty of opportunities.
Absolutely.
Great. Well, thanks again, Danielle, for spending time with us. We really appreciate everything you've done and, and we're looking forward to the results. At the Chamber, by the way, tonight I had my board meeting on the same topic as I praised your good efforts. They had a fun idea. They thought that maybe, you know, we always like to get a networking event together, you know, with some food or beverage. So, they thought maybe, you know, virtually, we could do something on March 31st, the night of, as a networking event to celebrate the success of this collaborative effort between all of us. So that we could, you know, the Chamber would run that, but I'm saying that's what they were, they suggested that. Maybe you didn't hear that yet, but you will sooner or later. So, now you're the first to know.
That's great. All I need to just get that video, oh, and one thing I didn't say is at the end of the night, I'm gonna do a video, not necessarily live, it'll depend, announcing the winning businesses and the winner. But that'll be a video so that, because video gets a lot more play than just throwing it out there. So, that's why I wanted to.
Excellent. Yeah, good idea.
After the video, then I can join that.
All right, good, good. Maybe we'll watch you, maybe we'll watch you doing the video and then.
It'll be a healing party.
There you go. There you go. All right, thanks, Danielle.
Thank you everyone for having me. I put my email in the chat. So, if anybody else has any questions and wants to reach out to me, please don't hesitate and I thank you all.
Great. Hey, thanks so much. Thank you too. Thanks so much, Danielle. Bye-bye. Good night now.
Good night.
Yeah, thank you for your patience to listen to that. I think it's gonna be fun, you know? So again, I thank you all for volunteering to help with this because, you know, many hands make for light work. And so, I couldn't be more appreciative. And Jim, you seem like you know a lot about that social media stuff. So, I thank you for trying to promote that out there, which would be a great assistance. The next thing we had on our, our list again is some good news. Again, you know, we have some of our, I'm just going, jumping around before we go into the restaurant because that's gonna take us a little while. I wanna knock out some of these other quickies. The, the P O C D draft, as you've seen, maybe if you looked at the website, I mean, excuse me, the Monroe emails, the draft was sent to us of what the P O C D will read like. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the, the draft that's there available. But it is, I did look at the economic development side and there was some good information in here I wanted to share. We've already sent back a couple of things to tweak before it goes to final, final print. um, so we did address some of that, so I encourage you to please look at that and, and let us know if there's any thoughts you have about what you'd like to see inserted in here. Um, some of the things I highlighted is that the town, it was recognized that the town has over nine hundred businesses in town. That sounds like a lot to me, which is great, okay? Um, it says that we, um, they have a greater share of establishments in the construction sector, as well as administrative and support and waste management and remediation services. Um, it suggests that transportation and warehouse and professional scientific and technology and other services are sort of lacking. Um, and it suggests that's not all of our retailers meet the demands of the, uh, Monroe population. You know, in other words, we don't have a complete diverse set of retailers, um, as we wish we could have. Um, for instance, it says notably that Monroe does not have any hotel or lodging establishments. Um, um, there are, I'll, I'll, I, for the sake of time, I'll skip a lot of this, uh, which you can read yourself, it's only about eight, nine pages, but I wanted to go to the bullets of, of where the, uh, strategies, there, there are seven strategies that were outlined, and I'm telling you, um, you know, because this group is moving so swiftly towards those end goals, we already have, I think, three quarters of this accomplished. Strategy one, collaborate with local business community to ensure that the town is responsive to the needs of the business community. That's perpetual, I guess, uh, number two, continue to develop informational materials and promotional materials, designed to attract new business to Monroe, so that's something we sort of have done, but we really haven't really drilled down too hard on that, uh, everything else seemed to have gotten in the way, and we need to go back after that, I know it was one of the things we did i- identify as, as a need, so maybe that's something we'll focus on. Take actions that are necessary and fee- as feasible to reduce the amount of time it takes for a permit to be issued. So that was a major concern, and, uh, you know, Bill is up to his eyeballs in that, in that strategy already, trying to expedite everything, and he's done a good job so far. We've had a lot better, uh, response time to, from every department with, under that roof over there to get that task done, because of his involvement, he's, he chases him up and down the hallways to, to assure of that. Um, number four, review the town zoning regulations and revise as needed to be more supportive of emerging businesses, practices and business types, and land usage, uh, you, land uses, so again, we have been working on that right along, right now, so, so that's good, we, we already have a lot of these already started. Review the town's practices with respect to, uh, optional tax programs, and make such modifications as appropriate to support the goals of the plan. Um, you know, in other words, that goes back to the abatement issues, you know, sometimes people are looking for abatements to come to your town, why would I come to Monroe if Trump was gonna give me three years worth of free taxation on my real estate property or whatever, you know? So they're saying we gotta be a little more creative on that front, possibly, you know, let's look at that, so we will. Uh, review the town zoning regulations and make appropriate amendments to incentivize investments and development that, that revitalizes the properties and provides a civic amenity or benefit. So again, that's going back to talking about, you know, the mixed use possibly, and the, the, you know, the vacant spot, you know, spots that we certainly do have right now, and number seven is, remain proactive in facilitating a productive re- uh, reuse of the former Stevenson Lumber, Pepper Street Industrial Park, and sites to ensure future uses that are economically beneficial to the town and compatible, you know, with the surrounding area, as we've always been respectful of that, so these are not major hurdles, I think we can accomplish this very nicely and be very proud that, that we actually will execute on the plan that's outlined for our behalf, so take a look at that. Um, I wanna say it was.
Ray?
Yes.
Mary, you know, you just read a lot of, uh, of, uh, information off, and it was kind of, it's kind of hard to follow if you don't have something in front of you, so that we can see all of those seven points. Can you circulate that for us, so that we have something that we could look at?
Yeah, uh, I think, it was, it's at, it's on the Monroe, uh, it was sent to us on the Monroe site, on the, on your Monroe, uh, email.
It was sent to, it was sent to the E D C members?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's why I picked it up on the E D C, I think Rick Schultz sent it out to E D C. But anyway, I'll shoot this, I'll shoot this out to you then, that's no problem.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's easy.
And then you've made, and then you said there were, um, comments made to some of these points, that the P O.
No, not to those points, no, uh, what I, what I read myself, which I corrected, uh, um, uh, Rick on it, or tried to get some modifications, I noticed that it doesn't refer to a lot of, uh, all the business zones that we have. It mostly references Route twenty-five and one eleven, as we both know, or all know, that, you know, we also have Route thirty-four, we also have one-ten, you know, so I wanted to make sure that, that we didn't, you know, drop the ball to not realize that those need to be mentioned in the, in the context, you know what I mean? We have more than just twenty-five and one-eleven, you know, so that, that was a very simple little, um, tweaking that needs to be done.
So, so, so the, I just wanna, I just wanna understand, understand.
I'll go slow, go ahead.
So the P O C D, okay, that document, okay, uh, is, is, is out there now, and E D, at the, or where the E D C section of it has seven items that were recommended?
Seven strategies that were recommended by the consultant, yes.
Okay, and those seven, what are we supposed to, are we supposed to, as a commission now, uh, support that, or, or take a vote if we're supposed to agree with those, or make comments?
Yeah, no, those were already, uh, they've already been hashed out, basically, and they're pretty much cooked in to the plan for the next ten years for the town of Monroe now.
Okay, so how are they hashed out?
Well, you attended some of those meetings with me when we went to.
I was in, I was invited to one meeting.
Yeah, because everything went virtual after that, they were all, they were all virtual after that, you know?
Never got, never got an invite.
Yeah, it's on the, uh, it's on, it was on the town sites, you have to go there and look at the dates, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did anybody else attend, or, or is that a miss on my part?
They were public meetings that were advertised on the town site, I believe they were, might have even been published in Voices as to when they were, but it's a state-run thing, the, the P O C D is run by the state, the town has to participate every ten years. We hire a consultant to write the P O C D. And then they produce various different drafts throughout it, and then when we were doing the virtual piece, it was, uh, broken out into a couple of parts for, uh, several hours over the phone on economic development and other areas that were of interest, and it was, I think it was broken out into three or four parts.
Yeah, and then eventually it goes to the town council for their approval, uh, uh, for my, for my, for my, you know, an overview completely for the entire town, from whether it has to do with housing, whether it has to do with, um, you know, with finance, it has to do with every component of running a town, it's within that binder, it's about a hundred and fifty pages thick.
I understand it, so, so I, I guess, that, you know, I, I, I guess I missed it, I, I don't know if, I don't know if anybody else missed it on, on, uh, on the, uh, on the commission, but I know I went to that first one where we met at the library, okay? And it was interesting, and then, you know, they were supposed to come back and give us an opportunity to, um, see what they were going to decide on, but if it's a done deal, so, so what's our next steps, Ray? We just now go marching toward these seven initiatives?
Well, that's pretty much it, yes, that is true, yeah, that's very much true, that's sort of our report card that we could keep an eye on, but don't worry, you got ten years to do it.
Okay, so it's on the, it's on the town website now, that we could, that, that we could go look at it?
Yeah, I think it, yes, uh, yes it is, yes it is, yes.
Okay.
Alright, so anyway, um, it's still in draft format, there's still tweaking that, that's gonna be done to it, uh, a- along the way, and then it'll be approved on, I think it was April, uh, was it April nineteenth I put down, or something like that on the, I believe is the final date for that, to be approved, uh, because it's a mandate to get it to the state level, and, uh, they've already extended it three months, it was supposed to be done in January, it was extended out till April because of the COVID. Um, it was actually supposed to be done by December thirty-first, I think, actually, originally, then they, then they pushed that.
It's a bell, December thirty.
Right, I think so, yeah, and then they pushed that to January, uh, with the one extension, and I think now it's April, April fifteenth or something like that, uh, for the second and final opportunity to get to the state level to be in compliance with this, uh, mandate, yeah, so it's all good, it's all good, and there's a lot of great ideas, and there's gonna be, you know, a lot of movement, so that's good. Um, um, the next thing I wanted to go over as I, I, I continue to try to share good news, um, again, you know, Bill and I made a presentation to the, um, to the town council, uh, regarding our budget, as we talked about at our last meeting, um, and, uh, and we brought up the fact that, uh, through some quick analysis, you know, that, that we've got some good storylines to tell, and the fact that, you know, during this COVID year, uh, we haven't really lost a lot of businesses in our town. Um, uh, as you could reference yourselves, as you drive up and down these corridors, you haven't seen a whole lot of empty slots that weren't already empty prior to COVID. So we're very happy with those results to date, as a matter of fact, I think with Bill and I, and Bill can speak to this, uh, I sort of remembered from his presentation at the To- Common Council, that it was almost like forty businesses that were opened during this timeframe, some, from June until current. So that's something you all should be broadcasting, you know, from the front stoop of your house, as cars drive by, yelling to them to let, make them realize that this kind of activity is going on in Monroe, because I have a feeling a lot of people wouldn't think that that's so. So Bill, can you fill in some of the blanks there?
Sure, right, so we did some analytics around all of the different areas that track businesses in and businesses out within town, um, there is no one consolidated source for the data, so the data was kind of piecemeal together and then reviewed for overlap, uh, removing duplicates and things of that nature, and then even then, the numbers don't all tie out, but what we did was, we first looked at the assessors report, and we looked at the, uh, personal property declarations that were added or deleted within town, so the withdrawals and the, the ads, we had sixty-ish deletes on the assessors, uh, report, and a hundred and twenty adds. The assessors report though has, um, a lot of home-based businesses, so it's, um, it's a lot of the businesses that are, um, accountants, lawyers, uh, contractors that work out of their house, and they're doing, they're filing a personal property declaration.
Graphic design artists, that sort of thing, yeah.
Right, masseuses and things of that nature. Uh, we also looked at the town clerk reports, um, and the town clerk reports track trade name certificates, DBAs, and those get reported through to the, to the assessors office, but there's not one hundred percent overlap. Um, for the town clerk, there were um, eight trade name certificates had been withdrawn, uh, and then by, by memory, I was able to add an additional seven businesses that also had left. Um, again, these are trade name certificates, these aren't necessarily retail establishments, they could be home-based businesses, they could be in retail locations, but they're not necessarily storefronts. Um, but we were aware of seven other new, seven storefronts that have left, um, so that was about fifteen-ish that have, that have left. Eight of those fifteen were replaced with like-for-like businesses, so Gaetanos, for example, Gaetanos left, they left in the midst of COVID, they never reopened, and then left town and moved to Shelton in the middle of the night, just like the Browns did, um, but Gaetanos was replaced with A and S Specialty, no football fans, nobody?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So A and S Specialty came in, uh, Tuscany Pizza, Tuscany Pizza closed, but Crown Pizza has, uh, has come in, they haven't received their C O, they're still in the midst of construction. M and G Nails left, Enjoy Nails came in and took over, it was a change of ownership, change of name. Uncle Al's Ice Cream, Monroe Dance Academy, Royal Fluffle, um, Phil's Hairstylist, The Quilt Shop, all of these different places, um, had a like-for-like, uh, fill-in when those businesses left. Um, nonetheless, we're counting fifteen businesses that left regardless of whether they were refilled. Also, in the town clerk's office, we looked at trade names that were filed, there were twenty-nine trade names that were filed, two occurrences of those trade names were duplicative, uh, two missing certificates that we knew about that weren't yet filed, but those were there, so that brings about thirty-one of them. Of the thirty-one, ten were in retail storefronts, and nineteen were home-based businesses. Almost half of those storefronts were filling vacancies that existed for years. Um, we had, uh, a P and Z report that talked about approximately thirty-plus changes of tenant, changes of ownership and new businesses, of those thirty-one, six of them were overlapping with the town clerk report, so we removed those six duplicates and came up with a grand total of about fifty-four new businesses opened since January of twenty-twenty, since June of twenty-twenty, I apologize.
June, right.
So net-net, when you're all done with the math, I count fifty-four new businesses, I count eight replacements, and three net loss.
And Bill, of the fifty-four new businesses?
Yeah.
How many were actually storefronts? Because the eight replacements would have been storefronts, right?
They would have been, yep.
They would have been storefronts, so there were eight storefront replacements, but of the fifty, you said how many, fifty-eight new businesses?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, so how many are those like Mary Hall?
I believe all of them were all storefronts, I believe almost all of them were storefronts.
All fifty-four?
I, I don't have the number in front of me, but by the fact that they're changes of tenant, changes of ownership, or a new business, and they're tracked by P and Z, I do believe that those would be, those would be more like storefronts than they would be home-based businesses.
Right.
Because the, the P and Z commission does not weigh in on home, home-based businesses.
Well, how are, oh, oh, okay, so I guess, how are we as part of E D C, okay, gonna have a database of where, of where a listing of all the businesses are? So that we know who to reach out to for various events in the, in the town or whatever? Because I, I don't, I, I mean, fifty-four new, I understand the eight storefronts changing, like Gaetanos and the new, and the new place, and, and, uh, you know, some of the, you know, you know, the ice cream and the nail places.
The delis and so forth, yeah.
But what about, you know, where are these fifty-four other storefronts in Monroe?
So you have, you have things, so when I count those fifty-four, those include things like Noble Gas that's, that's, uh, being developed, that, God, it's. It includes the, the new CBD store behind five seventy-four wines that's getting its C O most likely tomorrow based on its final inspection, but those are the kind of things that I'm counting as fifty-four. There's another smoke shop that went in at Chuck's Corner, another one that went in at Tollgate, there's Cumberland Farms that was built, there's the Verizon Store, there's a whole host of those, of those types of things. Warehouse lines moving, the Shell Station, BioMarx expansion, but most of these things are, are brought before the P and Z Board? To be a P and Z commission?
So how do we get a consolidated list for, as, as part of E D C then?
For all of the businesses in town?
Yeah. Because one of the things, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been talking to John Ray about, uh, you know, helping us with websites, and I know it's not on the agenda, we can do, I don't have enough information to really talk about it today, but one of his ideas, which I thought was really good when I talked to him this week, was create an E D C website, I know we have a Facebook page, but maybe creating an E D C website where we list all of our businesses, okay, and then give the businesses a page on that website so that they can go and promote, okay, what their business is selling, what their business is doing, but it's owned by the, it's owned by the E D C, so we're kind of mentoring them. So, you know, if we've got, if we've got nine hundred businesses in town, I think a lot of them are, you know, maybe tax consultants or whatever, you know, or, um, Realtors, or, uh, one-man shops, but I think we need to somehow be able to segregate them by categories of what's a storefront, what's maybe just an online business, what are restaurants and, and so forth, so that, so that we as E D C, because I, 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 I just don't know where these, you know, I, I guess I just haven't seen, you know, fifty-four new businesses. I know there's, you know, ten, I can probably go down one-eleven and twenty-five for, but is there a way, you know, we could get a list of them, Bill?
Um, we can, we can work on putting a list like that together. Like I said, the, the data is kind of all over the place, I'm pulling it from P and Z agendas, I'm pulling it from inland wetland agendas, I'm pulling it from the tax office, the assessors office, the, uh, town clerk's office, trying to get a, an amalgamation of all of the different points of, of data, there's no one consolidated point.
But in being helpful, but being helpful to what you're trying to do when this opens up and gets a, and gets licensed. Opens up and gets them and gets licensed. EDC being notified that it's a business so that we can help retain that business. Which which our charter really is. I mean, I mean, it's gotta make your job crazy. Waiting for stuff to come in all over the place and.
We've worked on this for, yeah, we worked on this now for two years to try to get that list. That was the first thing we asked for. And it's a it's really a very challenging thing. Yes, Jim.
Right, you, there's a um off of the Monroe website, there is an Excel file. That is monitored and I don't know who takes care of it. I worked with Steve Fabric on it. And there is a list of all the businesses and the reason I know is I moved from seventy-four Enterprise Drive to next door. And I spoke to somebody about a year ago in the town and that list was updated. So there's an Excel sheet somewhere and it has all the businesses on there. I saw it probably eight months ago. I just don't recall where. I'm driving home right now. I'm all done with the cross. But does anybody else remember that list?
It's still out there. Errors on it than accuracies.
I I agree with you. I could, there probably is, but I figured it's a start. It's somewhere to look.
It it is, and we actually, Ray and I had actually tried to tackle that whole business. Um what businesses are in town and driving up and down one eleven, twenty-five, thirty-four, one-ten, Elm Street, Pepper Street. Chucky Hollow, you name the road, Ray and I traveled it, writing down um numbers. And what businesses were there and and trying to keep it separate by the the northbound lane versus the southbound lane. Of each of the major arteries that are in town, so that we have a consolidated list of all of the businesses. The problem with with the document is it's outdated. As soon as you put it into print, it's just outdated. And to stay on top of it is, I don't even know how we could stay on top of it to guarantee its accuracy. But Christine could tell you how many phone calls we get a week in the first selectman's office about a business that's on there. That the email's wrong, the website's wrong, the it's pointing in the wrong direction.
Right.
The phone number is not right. You misspelled my name. And honestly, beyond.
I agree.
I don't think anybody uses it.
Right.
Bill, Bill.
Now, and to add something else to that is that, um you know, you guys are realtors, so you know how it works. Uh the landlords only want their rent check. So there are many cases where a businesses moves out on a on a Friday night and by Sunday afternoon at five o'clock, a new business is in there. They didn't go to the town hall to register for anything. They didn't tell anybody they're moving in. They just all of a sudden decided to open up because the landlord said there was a barber shop here. And therefore the seats are still nailed to the floor. You can open a barber shop tomorrow and they do, or whatever. Now they're supposed to go to the health department, they're supposed to do this. They're supposed to get a sign permit to change the sign over. And by the way, the landlord never told them that. And they didn't go looking for that kind of advice either necessarily. So I'm exaggerating a little bit, but that's how all of a sudden you could have five businesses move in. On a Sunday night at six o'clock and nobody saw it happen.
So Ray.
Ray, I fully agree. I just I just meant it as a as a benchmark. That's all I meant. Just like something we could always work at, you know, like an idea.
I'm just mentioning because I'm not sure if the other commissioners realize that's how simple you could slip in and slip out.
So, you know, taking taking what Jim just said and you use the word benchmark. Bill Ray, can't you reach out to, you know, Bill, your counterparts in like Trumbull or Newtown? And see what best practice they have for ensuring that the EDC Commission. Okay, uh is made aware of of the businesses that have come in, the businesses that have have left. You know, if it's through the tax, if it's through pla- planning and zoning, but but there has to be a workflow. Okay, because if if we're EDC and we're supposed to promote, you know, the retainment. Of the businesses and we don't know exactly how many businesses we have and where their locations are. I I'm I'm not quite sure, you know, how how we can. Um, how we can put a a plan together, okay? If we don't have that, if we don't have that base and you know, it's gotta come, you know, they have to go to the town. Cause they gotta get a permit or they gotta get a license or something. So there has to be a workflow. There has to be a workflow and EDC has gotta has gotta be put in that link. So you know. Would it make sense to, you know, reach out to, you know, the folks in 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 Trumbull? You know, that have the same role you have and and find out what that best practice might be?
We can explore that. We can absolutely explore that, but I haven't really had the time to put forth on on creating a a database. Of any sort. I mean, Ray and I, like I said, we tried to put together a list of all of the businesses. But with all of the things that we have going on with rewriting the the uh P and Z codes. And the regulations to allow businesses to be a little bit more business friendly and tackling some of the larger things that needed to be tackled. The documentation piece didn't didn't rise to the top of our priority list.
Oh, I know there's a lot, you know, I know there's a lot, but but you know, maybe it's the second half of the year, you know, once covid. You know, lessens up and some of the restrictions lessen up. I mean, you know.
Right.
You know, it's a phone call for our for for our counterparts or you know, maybe they're facing the same thing, you know.
I do know that uh the commissions are invited, both the um EDC as well as the Chamber of Commerce. They're invited to every single one of the ribbon cuttings and grand openings that we do. Um, we haven't been doing them lately because of covid. So I mean, that should alert the commission at least that a new business is opening. And it would probably, again, with the exception of covid, it would probably be in a recent time period. Subject to that grand opening and ribbon cutting, that they would be able to know that that business is now in existence in town. And that they would be able to support and frequent that business and uh help retain that business on a go-forward basis.
Right.
So I mean, that would be a much easier list to put together of all the grand openings that have happened. Um and I probably have that list somewhere floating around if you indulge me.
But I think it's a good, it's a good goal that we can keep internally here to try to get that. Uh buttoned up, because you know, we have worked on this for two years to try to get that list. We try to put that in the P and Z department with Joe Chapman, because he does see a lot of applications for signage. And he's the enforcement officer to look at the fact that they're complying with their uh startups and 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 their close-ups and so forth. So you know, we did try there, but covid got in the way this year and he's not been able to really keep that fresh and current. So you know, we have tried to tackle it a few different ways and as you said, as covid starts to dissipate, we can go back to business as usual. Which was one of our tasks that we did start a year ago and um but it it blew up with everything going on. So we we will keep heat over that and 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 be more successful eventually.
And also, I just want to also let you know, Mary, that of those fifty-four, which is the number that we were talking about of the new businesses. Some of them are merely expansions. So you've got things like Monroe Social that took over an empty storefront right next door to it. Monroe Social is now larger and it it closes out the vacancy.
Yeah.
And that's a new business. In my book, that's a new business because now they're going to generate more tax dollars. Jenny's, same story. Jenny's took over an empty storefront. They've grown in size. It was a vacant storefront. We're gonna take credit for that as in as EDC. There were three businesses that were in danger of going out of business because they hadn't paid their taxes and hadn't renewed their license. We figured out a workaround for them so that they can get current on their taxes, but not current current. But current enough to re- renew their license. So those are three businesses that were salvaged, not incorporated in the fifty-four. But three more businesses that would have closed had EDC not stepped in and resolved the issues. And taken a proactive uh stance in getting that taken care of.
And I don't want to deviate from the message. The message is is that we've got a really good story to tell. That's all we're trying to accomplish here. Is that we've got a phenomenal momentum going on in a time where you would tell your neighbor. That we probably closed forty stores this year because of covid and the answer is just the opposite.
But Ray, Ray, and it is a good story. But my but my point is, and what I was what I was trying to get at is if I go to my neighbor and I say. Forty new businesses opened up, they're gonna say to me, weird, I don't see them. Okay, so unless you have the data, okay, which obviously the town does. How can you go, how can you go and promote if you don't know what if you don't know what you're promoting? You know, Bill just made a point that, you know, Jenny's expanded and Monroe Social expanded. That's a good story because those are well, well uh populated. Businesses that people like to frequent.
Right.
Once even covid gets over, it's gonna drop. People are gonna, people are so sick of sitting at home and whatever.
That's right.
You wanna be jamming to those places.
That's right.
Able to do it. But if we don't have the data, how can you say, wow, forty new or fifty new businesses opened up? If you don't know what the names are. Because you know, people, people will look at us as commissioners and saying.
Well, we can get you, we could try to get you those names so you could tell the neighbors all about where to go find them. We'll get you those names.
There's a whole bunch of other stuff that's going in front of the P and Z commission. I mean, I counted twenty-four projects currently in front of P and Z. At various stages of planning and zoning approvals.
Yeah, I I don't know if you guys, I don't see a lot of you guys going on those calls on Thursday night. They go from seven till about nine-thirty or whatever is um. Um, so I encourage, I mean, uh was it Wednesday though, right, Bill?
Thursday nights.
Thursday nights, I'm sorry, it was right first time. So go on there. You're gonna learn all about what's coming and what's happening and what stages they're all in. Go on there for two-hour call, seven to nine, better than any TV show you can watch, including Netflix. Cause it's a lot of drama, a lot of action and a lot of great success stories coming.
Right. And then I'm also in conversations with a lot of businesses that are thinking about things. That aren't necessarily in the public view. They're not in front of P and Z yet. They're not in front of inland wetlands yet. But they're in discussions with subcommittees, with the Economic Development Commission, with the Town Planner. Where our guidance is being uh presented for these businesses and helping those businesses navigate those processes. So that they can get done what they're looking to get done. And those businesses, those those projects, they're not yet even in the public view. So I can't really go into a lot of detail about those. But it's got a lot to do with what Ray was talking about with the P and Z, with the POC date. And the um the changes to the the uh the regulations and the zoning regs. And what we allow, what we don't allow in town.
Right.
And how we can modify those so that the town is still protected to maintain that that charm and character that it has. Maintain that balance between the what the residents have come to expect from our town. But also be able to do economic development that grows our grand list and keeps our taxes flat. Cause let's just be honest, nobody sees a decrease in taxes.
Right. So anyway, I don't want to waste more time on this now. Let's move on because it's really not gonna get much accomplished if you don't keep going.
Hey Ray.
Sure.
I just have one comment, if I may. It's Christine. Um, there's another thought, Mary, too. Um, we've, I've actually reached out to a few businesses to see if they want to come in to town, such as like um. Those acai bowls, those uh poke bowl places.
Yeah, that's popular now, yeah.
I've actually, uh we've actually reached out to three different ones. And maybe if we keep going and if you see a business that you're interested in, maybe just reach out to them, send an email. Um, I mean, the response has been, well, we're looking into it, but we we need to keep trying. Maybe one of these times will strike and one of these businesses will come. A poke bowl place in town, um.
I went back to uh, I went and saw um last couple of weeks ago, I went and saw Chips down in Fairfield and and met George. Because we want to get chips back into Monroe, you know, for some of our new plazas we're gonna be opening up. So I had a dialogue to talk to him about, we're gonna set up a meeting to try to influence him to take over some of this new space that's gonna be going up over the next two years. Um, and cause he'd like to come back to Monroe. Why not have him come to Monroe instead of falling back into Trumbull? So that's something that, you know, we can work on, you know, at at your leisure to go find people that want to come to town.
So so, you know, I know we want to move on, so how so how can we wrap this, you know, topic up? Can we, can we get a list of these?
Yeah, we'll get to those forty, uh those fifty or forty names, whatever it is, so that way you can broadcast those.
Okay. And then Bill, you know, further on down the road, can can you see what your, you know, colleagues, maybe the other?
Now, um, the other thing we want to get on to is the uh June run week because interested in. I know that you were gonna talk up to uh John, so. Uh, oh, I thought we were going on to the next topic. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
It's okay, it's okay.
Mary, are you?
I, no, I I I'm done.
Oh, okay. Um, so yes, so I think that, well, I was gonna ask you too about John. So you don't have a report on John? In trying to use some of that budget for the uh social media and uh and uh website pages and all that to help these businesses that can't do it?
So I'll give you the thirty-second uh um thing. John can do some things for free. He can, he can charge us for some web uh, some web uh, you know, classes. But I think we have to come up with and we have to agree as a commission on what we really, how we want to help. So how we want to help the businesses, so when he puts together a business plan for us, okay? We can deliver on it in and to the businesses. And I'd like to have us have a special uh hour or so. Topic discussion on this because I think it's important, especially if we've got fifty-something new businesses. He had a great idea that that really uh wedded my appetite about an economic development website. Where we would have control of it and then businesses coming in. But Ray, it's a big discussion, it's a lot of work and it's something, it's it's something doable. And I believe the businesses would really enjoy it and it would be helpful for them. But we've got to agree and put together a plan and not just talk about it, but actually put it on paper and lay it out. So that we can deliver it to them.
Well, the only thing.
Whatever.
Right. The only thing I keep in 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 mention is that whenever you mention website, it's usually a lot of detailed work that has to be followed up on and committed to. It's not like you said it and forget it like uh that guy did with that cooker machine, uh Ron Popeye.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. It's it's.
So we have to figure out.
It's gotta be owned by the EDC.
Yeah, and who's gonna manage that is my point. We gotta find resources that's gonna manage that because there's nobody in-house. The town can't do it, you know. So we gotta figure that that part of the formula before we worry about how to roll it out there. So that's gonna be a challenge.
We gotta start at the bottom and you know, I don't think, you know. We could go on about this for hours, so I think it, I I really think it uh deserves its own uh uh.
Absolutely, yeah. But I'm just saying, that's gonna be one of the hurdles that we have to conquer first is how are we gonna manage it? Well, and when we get it so that we can help so many people that could appreciate it. That's always the big challenge, you know. Um, so we'll have to come to some kind of a solution on that. But thank you for researching that and uh we'll have to make another meeting on that. Um. Lauren, I know, was working on trying to solicit some of the restaurateurs to see if they're interested in a June event. Lauren, how'd you do?
Well, Mary also did. Um, I.
Oh, thank you. That's right. Mary did too.
Right, Mary did. Um, I said I would take the Main Street side of town. Uh, when I said that, I had no idea that there were that many food establishments.
You see, that's a good experience.
Right, so I I kinda, if we're gonna move forward with this, I'm gonna need some help with the Main Street side. Um, I, my list includes, um, I called several places. The smaller places, I mean, we're without taking the time to detail each, you know, one of them, the smaller places seem to think that. Um, for instance, Sal's, um, he said he didn't really get anything from it though. Um, Galdado Dorado, not interested. Uh, Carl Anthony's, Monroe Social, Austria Republic, Smithy, Roberto. Uh all, you know, they're all interested in doing it. I was talking to one of the restaurant owners and. I was kinda, and and I thought what he said to me was correct, that when it comes to restaurant, we. People are looking for an experience. So these smaller places, like Last Stop Coffee Shop, I called them, I don't know how many times. Um, uh, I'm not saying Indira Raj is a smaller place, but I called them several times, no, no answer. But I kinda.
He's always participated though. He's always into it. He's okay with it.
I just can't get him.
Yeah, I I go there and I actually actually go and sit down with him and uh he's always very keen to to jump in. He he actually is very enthusiastic, yeah.
Good, so that's good. So I I, because there were so many businesses on twenty-five. Um, quite honestly, I thought what we were doing is we were kinda getting a feel for the level of interest. So I stopped calling them since there were so many because I think that there is a level of interest and.
Sure there is, yeah.
Our call was really, we're kinda trying to find out potentially if. Our call was really, we're kinda trying to find out potentially if there's a Restaurant Week and. I kinda thought, well, if we're going to make a decision that we are actually going to do it, then, you know, we would move forward. So that was, I did also happen to run into Nicole. And I didn't realize that she, uh, ran the Restaurant Week last time, uh, cause I was going to ask at this meeting. You know, what kind of, uh, you know, resource we had to refer back to and.
Well, what, what Nicole ran was getting all of that imported data, you know, like the, uh, the menus and the offers and the. And the, uh, the, the, the pages that wanted to be, you know, put out there on social media. She's, was our social media guru, which we don't have one now. And that's what she did predominantly was get everything distributed and reposted and, 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 and tagged up to Instagrams. And she did all that kind of work, which is the biggest part of promoting the event. So. She's, she's right, she did do all of that for us, but we don't have that capacity right now, um, necessarily. Mary, do you concur with that too with your, with your calls? I saw your listing, looks like they were pretty favorable too.
Yeah, I got, you know, I did the, I did the ones on, um. One eleven and then I did the two on Elm Street. I did Angelo's and I did La Pianzo Pizza. You know, and they're all excited, they all wanna do it, you know, everyone in green on, on, on that list said yes. Uh, the ones in red, I didn't even do like the sushi place at Big Y or the, or the franchises.
Right, right.
Um, but I think, oh, okay, since, you know, most towns, okay? And I know, uh, Christine, you actually sent us some information on. Some of the other towns that were doing Restaurant Weeks in the, in the near future, I believe, right? So I think it's something we should go forward with. I think, I think. Uh, each of the businesses will come up with some type of a special for that week. I mean, I looked at my hometown of Amsterdam, New York and they were actually, did one in February. With the restaurants there and it was a flat price of like eighteen something. Because that was the year that Amsterdam, New York was incorporated. I'm not quite sure that, you know, eighteen dollars is gonna fly. You know, uh, uh. With, uh, you know, ev- you know, everyone or we could do something of when Monroe was established, which was in the, in the seventeen hundreds. But I think some of these places, you know, even the Chinese place wanted to do it, so, um. Let them come up with their menu, okay? We put a flyer out there, okay? Saying Restaurant Week is from here, this, from this date on Saturday to this date on Saturday. That, uh, restaurant, uh, gives that, uh, promotion out that week. And it's just gotta get posted on, uh, on the E D C page or some of the other pages. Now, I, I. I'm not computer savvy, so I can't do that. You know, I could, I could work with the nine restaurants that I. Uh, identified and come up with a menu with them, okay, and a price, but it's, uh, it's, you know. Then it's putting the flyer together and getting it posted.
May I interject here? I, I, are we, I, I, is the first step for us to decide? Whether or not we are actually going to do a Restaurant Week? So I don't know who we are on that, you know, have we made?
I think, well, the first thing was we were worried about the restaurateurs not wanting to do it. It sounds like you found out that they would do it. So that's the first step, that's, we could check that box. Then it's a matter of if we could, uh. Execute on the social media requirements, required to post all these menus and to get all these menus and to get all the data and, and the documents. And come up with a campaign to, to, to get it out there and to throw it out there and, and, and let it fly, you know? Um, so there is a lot of legwork to that as, as Herman who wasn't here tonight, uh, uh, suggested last month, uh, meeting. On how challenging that can be, even though it sounds simple. Um, we'll, we'll find that there's a big task there. Uh, once you overcome that task, uh, you, you lock and load and, and, and let it fire off, you know? And, and, and God willing, uh, it'll be successful, you know? Um, we can throw some ads into the Monroe Courier, uh, excuse me, Courier, yeah, long ago, uh, Monroe Sun. Uh, you know, and help promote that. We can, we can, you know, uh, uh, do something in Voices, we can do something in, in the New Town B. Um, to try to promote that, you know, uh, uh, as part of our kickoff for that Saturday, whatever date we pick. Um, so I, it's not really, you know, too difficult. The real challenge is getting the feedback from the people to commit to what they're gonna put in writing. Now, try and get it in writing from them is another challenge. They're gonna want you to create the, the, the. Um, format to lay it out and put the little figurines around it and the decorations. And jazz it up because they're gonna tell you, that some of them are gonna tell you that they don't know how to do that. We're back to the old issue that we talked about last month, which is, how do we design social media content and distribute it? Um, you know, appropriately on social media pages. And that's where we lose eighty percent of our population because they don't have that ability. Constantine Social does that, you know, Sam does that, you know, because he pays people to do it, Sam over, you know, so certain restaurants will be very capable. And others will, you're gonna be waiting for the cows to come home. So I'm just saying, that's where we're gonna spend most of our time.
Idea. I have an idea. And I sent you all, okay, an example of what, uh. Amsterdam, New York went and did. They did one flyer. The E D C did one flyer. They said, this is Restaurant Week. They listed all the restaurants.
That's what we do, right.
At the end, by each restaurant, they had what the cost of that meal was gonna be and what was included in that meal. Okay? And it was posted, okay, on, on their we- on their Facebook. It was posted in their newspaper or whatever, okay? If the business, the restaurant wants to add to that, okay? Then it's their responsibility to do that, okay? But it's our, but it would be our responsibility just to work with, you know, you know, and I'll say, I'll take. These nine that I went out to, work with the owners of that restaurant. What is the, what is the menu that you want, okay, for that week? And we plop it in to some type of a, some type of a pretty two pager or whatever. Lauren works with hers on twenty-five and other people can help Lauren with, uh, the others on twenty-five. And that's all we have to do.
I think, um, while I was, I, I, as I said, I happened to run into Nicole. And during this meeting, she was, I guess she did a lot of this the last time for the last Restaurant Week. So she was texting me a form that went out to restaurants. Um, she said that the budget, uh, the last time. Was around eighteen hundred dollars. I would assume that that cost factor probably increased. So I guess my question is here, um, A, are we going to do it, yes or no? Um, B, do we have a budget? How much is it? And C, um, I realized that it is quite a bit of work and. I personally, before I would commit, I, I think we need to know from. All of the commissioners who's willing to do what, so that we kinda, you know. I'm not sure what I'm committing to at this point and I think before I commit, I'd like to know what kinda.
Well, I, I, I think you're, you're on the right page, Lauren. I think what we need to do is probably again, have a special meeting on. On just doing Restaurant Week and what it should encumber because it really can go the full gamut. So we can do what Mary was suggesting, throw it up there, good luck, God bless, and hope you have a lot of fun and get a lot of support. And that's, you know, I, that's one of the more casual ways to do it with, without too much aggravation. Or, or, and if they bring us something, we'll post it. If they don't, we, then they don't get in there, it's that simple. We've done it elaborately to the other end of the spectrum, where we mailed out to every household, um, postcards. Very heavy, you know, five colored cards with all the listing of all the restaurants with beautiful, high gloss. Paper to make sure that everyone in town realized that this is happening. Um, uh, a- a- and, and that was a challenge because everyone wants to make sure they get on that postcard since it's being mailed. Except that they never, they never made the cutoff dates, so you're calling back to make sure that this is going to print tomorrow morning. I need a note tonight by midnight or you're not gonna be listed. So they wouldn't call us back, they didn't get listed. Now they're upset they didn't get listed. Cause they called me two days after that, you know? Uh, so I'm just saying, so you can go all crazy like that. Um, which is a lot of work, uh, and you have to do all the proofreading to make sure there's no misspellings, to make sure everything's, everything's published right. And the addresses are right, right down to it's not thirteen seventy-five, it's thirteen seventy-six, uh, uh, Monroe Turnpike, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of work there in detail to be done, um, which I'm just saying, so, um. That's, I think that's where we need a special meeting so we could actually discuss how intense we wanna get with this or not. Who's got time for it and who doesn't? Who's gonna do social media? Who can't and who can? Um, otherwise, there's no sense, um, in, in trying to dismay the opportunities to, to be successful, which I think we can be successful. I'm just saying, it's just a matter of what format we wanna do. And I don't know if we're prepared tonight to really say how deep we wanna go in this.
So Ray, okay. What I said, and you're absolutely right. I said it was an easy and, and a limited. Way to do it by just one big flyer.
Which is good.
That, we could do that for June because we're, you know, the restaurants are just gonna be able to start opening up. People are gonna start feeling comfortable going. We could do the big one with the more bells and whistles. In October for, a- as we get into, uh, Oktoberfest or something like that. But to give a boost, okay, to the community that we're doing a Restaurant Week, okay? And doing a flyer, but, but Lauren's absolutely right. Everybody's gotta participate, okay, and sign up. It's just not, you know, me going down one eleven and Lauren going down twenty-five. We all have to participate.
Oh, absolutely. No, there'll be an awful lot of, uh, follow-up and follow-through to keep, uh, everybody in check, uh, these restaurant owners. Who, who need to be corralled to, to comply because we have a lot of dropdown dates that we have to hit. And you can't really, you know, for newspaper ads like to the New Town B to bring people in from Sandy Hook into Newtown. They wanna, if you want an ad in there for June seventh, you've got a cutoff date of like May first, May second to get into June seventh. Uh, newspaper. So that means you have to have everything ready to go with, with, um, you know, uh, what do you call that? Uh, uh, you know. Uh, what they call the term, you know, uh, ready formatted, you know, with everything ready to go, uh, by May first. Which means, that means you gotta gather everything from the restaurant owners by April twenty-fifth. Um, you know, for, for a May first cutoff to get it printed for June first. So I'm saying is, you, you, we gotta really rock and roll real fast if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna go into that arena.
Also, this is Christine, can I just interject for a moment? I was just looking back to the twenty nineteen, uh, Restaurant Week. They had twenty-two restaurants. It is on the website, the Monroe website, if you wanna go to that and check it out. Um, and this is why I think, I know people don't wanna meet in person, but I think. What I could have provided here today, you could have seen what we did before. Um, but it, it, they take the logo from each restaurant and put it on the website. And then put the actual specials and you click on it. So it is a very involved, um, but doable. Uh, scenario, but I just wanna let you know there were twenty-two restaurants that participated in the last go-around, just as a benchmark for, as.
Hey Christine, Christine, who, who, who does that? Who puts it on the website? Who, what department?
Uh, that was when, uh, Nicole was doing it?
Nicole was doing that for us. She had access to, to the website and she's one of, that's what I'm saying. They don't have resources in town hall, this kinda stuff. There's nobody there for that.
That's a question. I'd be happy to help do that, I would.
Well, that'd be great, Jim, if you could help with that because that's the, that's the place we're really lacking. Um, somebody needs to know how to put all that stuff together and, and, and post it.
Christine? Did you see the one I sent you from Amsterdam, New York?
I, I did not, I'm sorry, I did not.
Okay, I'm gonna resend it to you all.
Yeah, please do.
Tomorrow morning, okay? Cause it was very simply done, okay? It wasn't an individual flyer for each restaurant. It was one flyer with the restaurant names. And what their specials were and how much it was.
Right, that looks simple.
And that flyer was then, was then distributed, okay, to their, to the, to the paper. And to, to their economic development and, and various Facebook pages. It didn't make the restaurants go out and do all this, you know, fancy stuff. It was just. It was, it was very simple. So I, I sent it out a week, about a week and a half ago to everybody.
Yeah, I saw it.
And Mary, I, I fully agree with you, Mary. I think that's something that we really need to do for this go-around. Where we are limited on time, we are limited on the resources, and I think it would be a nice adrenaline shot to the arm for the town of Monroe. During these times as we're starting to get going.
Right, right.
Bill, may I ask you a question? And I apologize because I know I called you on this last week. Um, but I, with all the legwork that needs to be done on, on a lot of these things, I'm, I'm, I'm back to that database. Um, that, that we talked about. And I, I know that you said you have nine hundred email addresses. And that obviously email addresses can't be publicized, I get that. But as I recall, on those nine hundred email addresses, they can't be separated out to like the restaurants or whatever. Um, and I was wondering if the way to separate them out. Would be through the health department because they would have had to apply for their. Certification, whatever it is with the health department. And I was just looking, I mean, I understood what you said about we can't publicize the email addresses. But if, if we can compile a database of restaurants from the health department that's just that. And the email addresses have to be kept private, that we could. Put together whatever email or whatever form of communication we wanted and give it to you to send out, and, you know, as an email blast to. Those restaurants, you know, without sharing the email addresses with us. Just kinda look for a way to just get the word out, you know? The, doing this and going around to different restaurants is pretty old-fashioned these days. And, you know, it takes a lot of time and we might be able to get more accomplished more quickly if we were able to have some type of database to reach out to. I mean, is it possible to separate our restaurants from their applications from the health department?
For those that have email addresses, I'm sure that we can, we can pull them out. Um. We can look into it.
Okay, I don't know. Well, one of the restaurant owners suggested that to me, that when they apply for their license, they have to have an email address.
Yeah, I have some of their email addresses, but I don't have the email address for the, the restaurant, for example. I have the personal email address for the owner or the manager. And I don't, is that who you wanna address this to?
Whoever the decision makes.
Language, if you wanna put together language for an email. And you wanna describe what we're trying to do and you want me to send it out, I'm happy to, to, to look for. All of the email addresses for the restaurants that we have in town. I sent everybody a list of all of the restaurants that would qualify for Restaurant Week, removing the Sedexos. Removing the CVSs, removing all of the ones that, that people weren't interested in.
Right.
So the, the list is there. If you send it back to me with which restaurants you want me to send information to. With what the information is that you want sent, I'm happy to dig up the emails for them.
Alright, thank you. I was just wondering about that. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, and everybody, I just.
One thing I do wanna mention though is I don't want the email to be the first communication to them. About Restaurant Week. Somebody should have already reached out to them, had a conversation with them about what we're gonna do for Restaurant Week. And then providing the email as a source for them to provide the, the paperwork back, not to, not to, um.
Introduce it.
Educate them on what Restaurant Week is and, and all of that. It shouldn't be a cold call email.
I, that, that makes sense.
Okay, I just sent to everybody again, I forwarded on the email, it's got, it's got an image of the two-page flyer. That the to- that, that town went and, uh, did for Restaurant Week. It was, was a very simple format. If everybody could take a look at it when, when they, uh, can get around to it.
Yeah, it was nicely done. Yeah, it was. Nice and simple. I like that idea. If we can get that, that'd be great. I'm just sending a note to Herman. I hope that, uh, I guess he's not on the call yet. But I wanna make sure since, um, we have this March eighteenth thing, I wonder if he was able to post that on his, uh, Western Connecticut Tourism District. Cause he was saying he doesn't get anything to post. That would be a great, uh, venue to post on that, uh, uh, Connecticut visit site. You know, uh, because Monroe's doing something like this, you know? So I'm gonna make sure he gets that message. Um, and, and can do that. So that's great. No, good dialogue. So I, I, so what's our action steps then? Um, we're going to, uh, have another meeting on this then, I guess? Is that what you do, we would recommend? Uh, trying to pull, um, you know, a, you know, an announcement together that, that. Uh, trying to pull um, you know, a, you know, an announcement together that that covers all the bases and does the right ask for the, for the involvement, is that what we should do?
Ray, Monroe was incorporated in eighteen twenty-three. So if we're gonna use the that that flyer as kind of a guide and we set a price at eighteen twenty-three, do we need to disclose anywhere what the restaurant is giving for eighteen twenty-three? Or whatever the price happens to be? Cause I'm, I looked at Mary's flyer and like there's some restaurants, there's some bakeries, there's a cookie place.
Yeah, you you know what, Bill, I I'm not sure that that date or the, or the date tied to the um incorporation of the town is gonna work for some of the places like we have. Or more, maybe it's uh two-for-one for that price they want to give.
Maybe we should save that tactic for two thousand twenty-three when we have our bicentennial.
Hey Ray, here's an idea, if, again, I. I'm sorry, it's it's James Goldson, I apologize. You know, let's say um eighteen eighty-three, you know, Purdy Hill Bakery could do a cookie for a dollar eighty-three or a cup of coffee. You know, so we, they could change it for their own benefit in that amount, I mean, I'm just as a thought.
Right.
Do we, do we, I mean, and do, do we think that? I mean, I I can't imagine us telling the businesses what they needed to do and what they needed to charge. It seems to me that we should let them decide that.
Yeah, well, it's just a novelty type of approach, that's all, yeah. Right. Well, again, if we get, you know, that's we have to determine what's gonna be our approach, what's gonna be our ask of the restaurant people? Um, and and then put it together so that we capture what we need and we can lock and load on this. It's, you know, it's just a matter of us figuring all those details out. Um, and what format do we want the information sent back at? Is it a PDF? JPG, whatever it is, a vector file, what is it that we need? Um, or not, maybe we don't need anything at all. We're gonna put a listing together like Mary said on, from her hometown and and we can put that in on a typewriter for crying out loud and and we're all set.
Hey Ray, this is Christine. Um, I just asked um the person next to me, we could pull this together, not a problem, it'll look good. You know, once uh we get the restaurants, this, this is, this, this can work. And and it is easier. That way, we don't have to have individual um specials and all that, maybe just a quick special and then just add it to the flyer.
So we would just advertise Restaurant Week, Monroe Restaurant Week, and here are the participating restaurants.
Correct.
No details, no menus, no anything around it.
No, you would, no, no, I think you would put the menus down, Bill. And you know, like, like the nine restaurants that I visited and called on um on Monroe Turnpike. I told them that if we decided to do Restaurant Week, that I would personally work with them to to uh put together what they wanted to offer and then we would take it back to the EDC. So I would go back to Larry at McGowan's and say, Larry, what do you want to do for the whole week? What's the special you wanna, you wanna talk about? Maybe he wants to say, I'm gonna do a touch of Tuscany or something. And he, you know, he calls it the Tuscany uh, you know, special this week. And he he does an appetizer and he does a, you know, and you list it to what I showed you, Christine, and you just call it out on there and that's his, okay? And then you go to Angelo, okay? And uh, you know, what are they gonna do at A and S, okay? Maybe he's gonna have some special sandwiches and some, and you know, a uh, or like a platter or something. You know, a platter of wings or something with a, with some sandwiches. And and he advertises that for the week. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same price for everybody.
Okay, that gets away from the single flyer concept that we were just talking about. So maybe I missed something, but I thought we were on that single flyer concept and that's why you resent it.
Right, and that's why it makes it easier to do. It gets the biz, it gets the restaurants, okay, motivated to do takeout or dine-in because we don't know what June is still gonna be, okay? And then we do the bigger blast where, you know, because we have the budget for it and we do a bigger blast, okay, in October for Oktoberfest.
Hey Mary, it's James, can you clarify something for me? Because I I don't understand, one moment you said you wanted to just do a single flyer, but then you also said you want to do a whole menu, so I I kind of.
Okay, so, yeah, James, look at the email I sent you, I don't know if you're on your email. It's a single flyer, but on that flyer, it's two pages and each restaurant is listed and it has what their menu is.
I didn't see their menu.
It's on the second, it's on the second image.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I just think trying to get all the menus and everything for them might be challenging with the time constraint between June. Just knowing how some of the businesses work, I would love for them to give us that information and we could post it social media, doing it Instagram, doing Facebook, where then we could do stuff how all the different groups in Monroe, not only the EDC, but you know, Monroe Parents and, you know, all the great Monroe, there's so many groups in Monroe I belong to, I I forget, I opened up Facebook, they're just, you know, all over.
But, but Jim, Jim, a a two-page flyer listing the restaurants with their, with their menu, doesn't, it it can be posted on the uh Monroe Parents Facebook?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Monroe Residence, whatever, it can be posted wherever. But it doesn't put the, it puts the onus on us as EDC, as the commission to promote that, to promote the restaurants for that week. And what the restaurants have to do is to come up with what they want to to charge or what the menu is and we work with them. And then we publicize it.
I think as long as we just put a hard deadline and then we just try to, you know, I'm just getting the man hours trying to get these restaurants to come back. But what do we think, we would get twenty restaurants to participate?
I got nine, I got nine, I got nine, and I commit to doing, I would commit to working with my nine, okay? And coming up with my, and uh working with Larry and Angelo and uh.
Yeah, I think we had last time, I think we had almost forty restaurants all total, I think, yeah.
Well, I think we need to somehow creatively divide that list so that, you know, Lauren has her nine, Mary has her nine, and we kind of decide where else to go and who else we're gonna go to, and then we, you know, we can come up with it. If, you know, Christine is willing to help with the flyer and stuff, I think we can very easily do this.
Like I said, it's pretty easy to get them to agree most often because it doesn't cost them anything. Um, you know, uh, most, as I said before, most of the restaurant weeks at all different towns, they charge between three to five hundred dollars to participate to offset the costs that are involved um for printing and and advertising and so forth. So, you know, I I don't think there's gonna be many, you know, referrals, so it's just a matter of if they don't follow through to get us the merchandise that we need to be able to publish them. So, I mean, we had, I think it was like forty-some we had last year. Um, I though, I maybe only twenty-two that Christine was referencing actually got listed because they didn't make the cutoff for the print job. Uh, but we ended up another twenty by the time they finally realized that they should have gotten it to us. So I think it was more like forty we had all total, thirty-four, thirty-six rings a bell. So I don't think we have a problem getting yeses, Bella Rosa will do it, Dave over there is always good at that. I mean, they're, they're all gonna say yes because it, again, all it does is bring traffic to their cash registers, which is what they appreciate. Um, uh, with the little bit of hype that we can put behind it. So there's, it's a win-win all the way around. It's just a matter of us getting that information and trying to get it out there. We don't charge anything to anybody, it's all free. So that's the positive we have to offer, which is great. All right, so um, we just have to decide then which format we're gonna go with then and and uh, I guess. Um, and and uh, we gotta put some kind of a a press release together as to what it's gonna be and then we gotta start to get the information out there then. So you want to do that now or you want to have another meeting, it's up to you.
I don't know, but I, do, are we really prepared? Do we have enough homework done to make decisions or I I think, I don't know.
Well, I think the, you know, again, I think getting the menu information from the restaurants is gonna be the easy part theoretically. It's a matter of how much are we gonna do ourselves as a team to promote a a a package, a market? Uh, the novel, again, how are you gonna, what's the theme? That sort of thing is gonna be all on our shoulders as to craft together. You know, you can see what Amsterdam did, they said it's a taste of Amsterdam and and it probably was a celebration of their eighteen eighty-five history and that was their theme. Um, and and I'm sure it worked well for Amsterdam. You could have gone to Goodfellas and gotten a twelve-cut pizzas and ordered a bonus set of wings for for eighteen eighty-five. Um, so that's how simple that was. Um, you know, so we we can do that, uh, if that's the format we want to go in, I think that that's very simple. And it doesn't have to be eighteen eighty-five, every one of those could be a restaurant and twenty-five dollars, nineteen dollars, uh, forty, you know, forty-four dollars for a take-home of a four-pack of Jenny's. They're forty-four dollars for all-inclusive, he can list it, you know, for us. So there's, you know, that's could be the format, you know? Um, so we don't have to stick with any kind of number. Um, and we're just going to um, you know, um. When is spring? That's June, is, what what happens in June? Doesn't, isn't spring, when is spring, June twenty-first?
No, that's summer.
That's summer, thank you, thank you, Jim. Spring is soon, I think. Um, so yeah, maybe we, maybe we call it our summer, our summer blast and 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 try to tag along with that theme of June twenty-one. You know? Uh, you gotta try to build some kind of a, you know, some kind of rally something together rather than just saying, okay, it's Restaurant Week, ready, set, go, kids, have fun. You know, you gotta have, hype it up a little bit. So that's not the restaurants, I don't think will do that, that's gonna be us to figure out what that needs to be. Um, you know, all they know is they have to give you the feedback that you're asking for. The rest is on us. And the feedback we need from them is a menu of something, what item are you, are you gonna offer up that seven-day period? And for what price? They can give you that probably within an hour if they really put their mind to it.
So are we um, does this mean that we are going to move forward with Restaurant Week? Or are we going to have another meeting to make that decision?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know, what do you want to do? I think we probably should get together another time because no one's prepared right now to put this layout together with some concept of what that theme should look like and how to hy- hype this up so that it makes it a little bit of fun for the town. And uh, again, after we figure all that out and we lay it on a piece of paper, maybe we we can work with. Jim, do you know how to lay out that kind of stuff on a, on a, on, on, on some kind of a, you know, format that we could utilize to to promote it to the restaurants?
Yeah, I mean, I could have something made, I could have something made up in Illustrator, I can make a, you know, start to make a flyer or that's what we need.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, let's start with a flyer with a theme. You know, and maybe the theme is a, is a summer theme, you know, the a a summer blitz of of restaurant in Monroe or something like that, I don't know. Uh, we gotta figure out what that is. Um, um, um. So that's what I'm saying, that's why we need a little time to think that through and and come up with that buzz that's gonna create the buzz behind the Restaurant Week besides just saying we're having Restaurant Week. So I think that's, you know, and maybe there's some of the, and and none of the restaurants gave you that feedback, right, Lauren? On what that theme could look like or feel like, or they just said, yeah, we'll, we'll do it because we'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, I I, I don't know, speaking as an independent contractor myself for more than thirty years, I I, I mean, I'm like, I I guess I just I think each person needs to be respected in the way they built their business and however they want to do this.
No, I'm saying they didn't, they didn't come up with some kind of a theme thought or, hey, this is, you know, I don't know.
No, I I, I think, uh, I'm not sure who brought it up at the last meeting, I think it was Mary about, you know, not doing a graduation week or I'm not sure who brought that up, but when there was, were two people I talked to that hesitated, I'm like, well, we wouldn't do this graduation week. And they were very much, they definitely didn't want it that week, so um.
Yeah, I think graduation will probably be early this year, I think school's out like June twelfth or something like that, isn't it?
Yeah, so I.
So that's what I'm saying, these are the kind of particular, we have to figure iron out and and uh, and then slate a date and go with it, you know?
Personally, okay, all right, then let's do that.
What else is in June? Is there Father's Day in June?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the fourteenth.
So the beginning of summer, the beginning of summer starts Sunday, June twentieth. So you could do it that week.
Yeah, because that gets around Father's Day, because I'm sure the restaurants will be busy for Father's Day maybe. So that's why we wanted to refer with that. And I assume the week before that's gonna be, you know, or right around that same time might be graduation for people, because I don't think graduation is gonna be in the late twenties if they're getting out of school on the twelfth and the tenth and everything else. If I'm right on my dates, I think they're all really early, because they didn't have any snow days, they they forced two snow days down everybody. So there's not gonna be a long-winded and and I don't think there was um, a a big timeline difference there to conclude the hundred and eighty-one days. Because of remote learning.
So we're looking at the week of the fourteenth or the week of the twenty-first?
I would say that I would vote for the week of the twenty-first.
Yeah, I think that's better.
And kids should be out of school at that point.
That's what I'm saying, school's done, graduation should be done, Father's Day is done, and some, and summer is started by by one day. So we could tie it around something to do with summer fun in in Monroe.
So we don't need, so 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 we don't need to come up with a name now. But we all agree that we want to do a very simple, okay, Restaurant Week with one easy flyer, let the businesses, to what Lauren said, let the businesses decide what they want to charge, what their menu is, and then we just make up a flyer and prom- and promote it on our web, on our Facebook. Uh, send it, send that two-page flyer or whatever into the Monroe Sun, pay the fee to Bill Bitter, pay the fee to Newtown, maybe run it every day that that week or or the week before, I I don't. I mean, I'll work with my nine, I'll work with the nine restaurants I went out to, Lauren, you'll work with your nine, right?
I'm sorry, Mary, say that again?
You'll work with your nine restaurants, right?
Absolutely, I will, totally.
Yeah, and we'll get some more, don't worry, we'll get, we'll get another twenty, real easy.
Lauren, this is Christine, if you don't mind sharing your nine so we don't duplicate efforts, that would be great.
Everybody has my list, right?
Yeah, we have your list, yeah, we have your list, yeah.
Be happy to.
Great, okay, well, I think that puts us um pretty much into a wrap on that. And um, so Jim, can you try to put something together and and even maybe think about a summer?
Sure.
Summer theme to that because of June twentieth?
A hundred percent. Um, I don't know if this is a, probably what I'm gonna say, I don't know if it's allowed, but I'm just gonna throw it out there since I'm new to this. If anybody wants to kind of meet for a coffee or even just an individual Zoom, you know, to kind of talk about some of this and brainstorm, I'm I'm open for that, if, you know, in between now and the next meeting, if anybody wants to have a, you know, off-the-record kind of meeting, like how we can iron this out. I don't know where we can do that one.
Jim, unfortunately, I don't think you can do that with, we have to meet as a commission.
Okay, I was just looking for an idea of like.
Three, I think if it's three or more, it constitutes a meeting, but you can certainly meet individually. James, give me a call, I'll meet you for coffee.
Yeah, thank you, I'd love it.
Bill, say that again, if it's, if it's one or two, it's okay?
Well, obviously, if you're by yourself, it's all okay. But if you're with one other commissioner, I think that too is okay. Like you and Lauren can go out and have coffee and it's not a meeting. But as soon as you bring Christine or Jim or Ray or Herman into it, it's now a meeting because there's three of you.
Right.
We have, I have to check what that math is and we can do that, but uh, because we are down one commissioner, there's only six of us. So I don't know, I don't know, well, six of you, I don't know.
Yeah, no, but that's how I was always told, it can't be three or more because um.
But technically, if we social distance, we're not together. I'm just making a joke, just making a joke.
That's it, that's it, Jim, you got it figured out.
Jim, I'll reach out to you. Um, we'll, we'll work on something here, compare notes, collaborate and see what we come up with.
Great. And then we'll come up with another meeting and probably before, it will be definitely before.
Special meeting.
A special meeting prior to April so that we are, you know, uh, going to be a little bit ahead of the curve on this. And then we can fi- formalize and finalize uh the concept and then start to build a a marketing model as to where it's gonna go and what dates um and so forth, we'll get some estimates from the marketing so we can put a budget together. Um, just so everybody's uh on board with what we're gonna spend. Um, you know, um, do we do some kind of postcards or whatever so we could put it out in the, out in the field, if you will, in advance? Or 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 during, like in in May, to announce it besides a one flyer? Are we gonna make colored flyers to go on doors and in and in? Are we gonna make colored flyers to go on doors and in, and into restaurants and, and libraries and so forth? So those are the kinda thoughts we have to put together so that we have a real good marketing strategy so that, um, we're gonna do the best we can. Besides all the social media stuff that's so critical. So that's what we'll talk about at that meeting and we'll get a date together that we'll announce. Okay?
Okay.
All right, I thank you all for your good contributions and I think we made some good strides. Um, and, uh, I wish you all a good evening. I think we can move for a motion for adjournment.
I'm listening.
Thank you, Lauren, a second. Thank you, Christine. Thanks, Christine.
Your favor.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. And I thank you all and wish you the best evening.